To seriously investigate it. There's a lot of information out there on both websites. There's a map showing where sites are contaminated within the state of Florida. And they have their levels to determine the level of contamination. There's active litigation regarding it. It is a major, major issue. And so I highly, again, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council and the members of the public to research it forever chemicals PFAS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schenks. Anyone else for public comments? Seeing no one come. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Darlene Shelley. I'm in Palm Coast.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm requesting today that the council consider amending Munich Code, Section 35, for nuisances and offenses, 35 to 54, and remove from the exempted lit noise list 11, which reads all noise coming from normal operation of aircraft, not including model aircraft. The residents of Palm Coast and Flagler County should not suffer the constant pollution, lead, and nuisance noise far louder than allowed under sound level limits set forth in Section 35 dash 53. I also will put forth that over 500 daily touch and go operations conducted constantly by training school aircraft circling over densely populated Palm Coast is not a valid description or definition of normal operation of aircraft. A normal operation over a densely populated area at a general aviation public use executive airport is one takeoff and one landing, ideally bringing us executives from Home Depot or NASCAR coming to our city and our county to spend money, eat in our restaurants, and use our establishments. The insane number of daily flight school operations is not normal. It is a product of airport mismanagement, disregard for FAR Part 150.21, noncompliance of a noise compatibility program, lack of the required noise exposure map based on accurate and current information, and the failure of Flagler County and the city of Palm Coast to collaborate as required by FAR 150.23E4 to prevent noncompatible development adjacent to the airport. Under nuisances, offenses, and miscellaneous provisions, the following specific acts are declared to be unlawful and are prohibited. And it states the use of any motor vehicle without a muffler, the operation of which cause aloud and raucous noise. And exempted noises, for some reason, and I can probably guess the reason, all noise coming from the normal operation of aircraft, not including model aircraft, is exempt. Why is this exempt when it is one of the major reasons for noise issues in Palm Coast? And these planes are flying between 300, 400, and 500 feet over our homes, where 1,000 feet is the minimum? And I beg you to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. Any of the council have any comments on the subjects that were just raised? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor, maybe I can help with a few of them. Regarding Mr. McDowell's request on the forensic audit, as city council knows, you're about to go through your auditing process, and that is a public workshop that is scheduled for March, as well as the previous council asked us to look into conducting a presentation on what really a forensic audit is. And that education presentation was given to the previous council back in August, September. And from that, the city council requested staff to come back with an RFP on an entity-wide risk assessment. And we are planning for that RFP for your review on February 25th workshop. And then also on the overcapacity that is scheduled for your February 25th workshop as well. And then, thank you, Ms. Schenk, about the PFAS and forever chemicals, also PFOS. I'll have Mr. Rousseau compile a memo that we can release to city council, just where we're at with that. We are conducting testing, and there is a settlement out there for us to obtain. And so we'll give you some more information about that. And then for the public, the utility department is going to be conducting a lunch and learn at our community center in May about those forever chemicals and what the city is doing. So that's a great educational resource for our community to participate in that lunch and learn. And then for Ms. Shelley, you city council took action and directed the city attorney to put on a future workshop regarding the airport and airport noise. And so we are working with Mr. Duffy and his office to get that on your upcoming agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on the council have any comments? Okay. With that being said, we'll move on to, I'm sorry, let me go back for a second. The expo that we had at the community center was a great experience. A lot of new people, a lot of newcomers to the city. And I commend Brittany and the staff that put that on. It was a great learning opportunity for a lot of people that are new to the city. Okay. With that being said, we'll move on to the item E1, which is presentation from Advent Health.
Yes, Mayor. While our guests are coming up to the podium, we want to welcome our COO and CEO, Mr. Wally DiQuino and Ms. Denise Chubbs Bales. I think I got that right.
Let me make a correction.
Okay.
So Wally is the CEO of our Advent Health Palm Coast Parkway Hospital, and I'm the CEO for the Palm Coast, Flagler, and St. John's markets.
Awesome. We thought it'd be beneficial to you as city council, since Advent Health is a longstanding, great business relationship with the city. We wanted to give you an insight about what they're doing and the economic impact that they're providing here in our community. So thank you both for coming and presenting today.
Thank you, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for the invitation today. You know, Advent Health is one of the nation's largest nonprofit healthcare systems, and it's the largest one headquartered in Florida. With more than 50 hospitals across nine states and a robust network of outpatient clinics, urgent care centers, and off-site EDs, Advent Health is one of the nation's largest faith-based healthcare organizations. At the heart of our organization is more than 95,000 team members who help us deliver care to over 8 million patients every year. Focusing on our East Florida division, which includes Volusia, Flagler, and Lake County, we currently have seven hospitals within those areas. As you can see here, these are our two local hospitals, Advent Health Palm Coast and Advent Health Palm Coast Parkway, which roll up to our Eastern Region CEO, David Weiss. Just last year alone, Flagler County and our talented teams treated over 63,300 patients in our emergency rooms. We cared for nearly 13,500 inpatients. Every day, I have the privilege of working alongside 1,800 team members and 900 physicians. These are incredible healthcare professionals who choose to serve their neighbors right here in Flagler County. And in fact, 73% of our team members do live here in the county. Advent Health believes in providing care close to home, looking to our local facilities to determine what service lines we need to grow to address the healthcare needs here. Florida was recently named as the fastest-growing state by the U.S. Census Bureau, and that is something that we're also experiencing right here in Flagler County. I'm particularly proud to share some of our accomplishments. We celebrated the first-year anniversary of our Palm Coast Parkway Hospital, and in its first year, they treated 29,000 people through this new hospital. Advent Health became one of the top private employers here in Flagler County, which highlights the local role in the economy. And we continue to recruit healthcare professionals, including physicians. We also continue to invest in our communities and building new facilities and service lines, such as our new Freitag Cancer Center, which just had its opening on January 16. And we recently completed a refresh of the emergency room for the Palm Coast Hospital. And I'd like to turn it over to Wally DiQuino to cover some of our partnerships.
Thank you, Denise. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Our local partnerships demonstrates that Advent Health is more than just a healthcare provider. We are committed to enhance the community and the well-being of our county and city of Palm Coast. One of my favorite partnerships is with the school departments. Advent Health serves as the official healthcare champion for Flagler County schools. We focus on career development, mental health, and sports. In fact, we also employ the athletic trainers to support our athletes in both high schools. And we provide the sports physicals, free sports physicals, to all of our students in the county. Last year, we saw about 630 students coming through for the free physical. And what we're very proud about is that we also offered cardiac screening, which we believe it's very important. And we had over 500 students accepting to be screened for the cardiac component. This was an increase of about 300 students that actually, from the prior year, that came through for the screenings. We continue to work also with community partners, our schools, but we also understand that our clinical excellence is also important. We also recognize that our culture has to be robust as well. We have to be a great place to work, and we have to be a great place to practice medicine if we're going to be a great place to receive care. And this is very important for us, and we're very intentional about our clinical excellence, which has been recognized by some of the leading national institutions. Not only is our clinical care recognized, Advent Health is often celebrated nationally as the top employer or a great place to work. Locally, our hospitals were nationally recognized by modern healthcare for our innovative and out-of-the-box approaches to improving the nursing experience. And if you haven't had a chance, I would like to invite each one of you to come for a tour and see the great work that our team members are providing to our community. So now I'll open it for questions.
Anyone on the council have any questions for?
I just have one question. You showed a slide of all of the partners in the community. How is it that people can try to become a partner with Advent Health? And then, how do you all choose your partnerships?
You know, we welcome anybody. People approach us during different community events and ask if they can sit down, have a talk, and see how we can partner. And we are always open to those partnerships. And, you know, we just look at how can we serve the community and how can we improve the healthcare of the community?
Is there, excuse me, is there a liaison with Advent Health that specifically works on those partnerships?
You know, it depends upon what the partnership entails, but we do have specific people that work like with our school systems, the athletic trainers and everything. But if they just call the administrative office, we can get an appointment set up for them right away.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? I know you guys have invited me for a tour. I just, I haven't had time. I'll get there eventually. I hope I'm not in the emergency room when I do.
That's a tough way to have a tour, okay.
This hospital, before it was converted over to Advent, saved my wife's life. So, you know, we're grateful for your service to the community. One question I always get is about maternity.
Yeah.
And do you guys have any, you know, future plans for anything as far as maternity is concerned?
So we do monitor our demographics on an annual basis. Right now, our fastest-growing demographic is the 65-plus age group. So we continue to look at that every year. We want to make sure that we only deliver exceptional care. And as most people know, OB is a very specialized level of care. And so we would not want to provide that care unless we were able to retain the team members and the physicians that would be there to provide that exceptional care. So we right now have those services over at our Daytona Hospital, and we have a Level 2 NICU over there.
Yes. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Can I piggyback on that, if you don't mind? Because I just had a baby nine months ago. And I will tell you, it was disheartening. There's not a single OB-GYN in the whole county of Flagler, not a single one.
Well, we work with some of them, so like Dr. Toppie and her practice are OB-GYNs, so.
They're not taking patients, or at least they weren't. I mean, it's a struggle. And I can tell you, I've got a lot of family members who have had to go to Ormond, Daytona. I went up to St. Augustine. And that's a common theme, not only for women in our community who are pregnant, trying to get pregnant, but also those who have had postpartum depression. I mean, there's a very big need in this community. And I understand demographics nationally. We're all aging, right? I mean, that's not a Florida thing. It's not a Palm Coast thing, maybe a little bit more, but the, we're, families are not growing right now. People are not having kids, unfortunately, for a bevy of reasons. So I struggle with the response respectfully, that, well, we have an aging demographic, and so, because quite candidly, that's a business response that.
Well, having physicians, OB-GYNs, would be very different than delivering babies. So we need to look at making sure that we have the physicians in the community that can at least provide those outpatient services, absolutely.
Yes, but also more services for our children as well.
Yes.
So we have, we struggle too with pediatricians in this community as well. So I think looking at it, and I understand Advent Health is a business. That's not lost on me. But to really, I think, show a partnership with the community that is, that has a dearth of those services. We need a true outreach and see how can we bring in these services and make it work for your business model? Because again, you are a business. I understand that. But we need it in our community badly. And we need the services for families that are trying to grow, families that are growing, and then for mothers who are struggling after their family, you know, giving those services to their families.
Absolutely.
So just something to think about and take back.
And we appreciate that, you know, the comments and everything, and we'll definitely take it back to our team, and we'll do some, run some numbers and see what we can do to, you know, make sure that we're delivering those services. Thank you.
And I would reach out too. We've got a lot of volunteer organizations in the community that try to help the women in our community because we don't have the services. So maybe getting with city manager, I know she's probably aware of many of those, and as am I, and I'm happy to give you those contacts.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I'm sure our demographics are going to keep shifting, so just having that foresight of, you know, on the campaign trail, that's what, I was hit with that all the time about maternity and delivery. And so I appreciate your time and your attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're going to move to E2, which is.
Mr. Mayor, this is, secondly, still has to go up for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. My, I'm so sorry. Please, anyone for public comments concerning the hospital's presentation? Anyone? See, I was right, Marcus. Nobody came up. Okay, we'll move on to SGR as far as the city manager search. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. As part of your process for hiring a permanent city manager, Mr. Doug Thomas, your recruiter from SGR, is here to help you narrow down your candidates to semifinalists. So your reference materials are in your agenda packet, and Mr. Thomas will begin his presentation.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Mayor. How are you this morning?
Pretty good.
Great. I know that Renina is going to be loading up the PowerPoint this morning, and appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning to talk a little bit about the next step in your recruitment of your permanent or your ongoing city manager recruitment activities. First and foremost, my apologies. I know we are going to be doing this earlier in January. I started off the new fiscal year, all hip-up comments aside, with a bad case of kidney stones that really took me out of the operation for a while. So I had a chance to visit the emergency room with a different hospital back in my community as well, but I appreciate your patience as we worked through that process as well. What we're going to be doing today, we have had the opportunity to provide some information to you in terms of all the different candidates that have applied. Several of our clients like to have their cover letters and resumes, others do not. And so we certainly honor whatever the process that you would like to pursue to review your candidates as well. My colleague, Michael Simbor, who you met when he was here before, when we were here late last year, is feeling a little under the weather as well. So he is here by Zoom as well, and Michael and I have had a chance to review the processes and just kind of review their candidates and try to help you in this triage process. So if you're ready, Renina.
You can figure it out.
Figure out the PowerPoint presentation. I'll just kind of explain the effort. The goal here today is for you to ultimately select some, a smaller subset of the applicant pool that has come together for you, in which we're going to learn a little bit more about their background, their interests, their experiences, their history, their abilities to kind of deal with some of the challenges and issues you're facing. So I think we're up and running now. So, yeah, gotcha. Okay. So we'll talk a little bit about how we've marketed the position, how, what the demographics of the candidate pool look like. My goal today, since you've seen all these candidates in terms of their background material, I'm just going to walk through at a very high level some additional insights from candidates that either I know personally, or I've seen in other searches, or from Michael's and my perspective about why we think they might potentially be of interest to you as well. I'm going to encourage you all, as we go through this, I'm sure you, as you've reviewed these folks, has kind of identified folks that you're more or less interested in. I'm going to ask you to use kind of this as a lens, if you will, that will help us narrow down the pool of folks that will be selected as semifinalists. So as we work our way through these candidates, I'm going to ask you to say, to put a 1 by a candidate that you're at least interested in learning more about. They may be some of your stronger candidates as well. A 2 by a candidate that you might be, you're not necessarily sure that's a good fit, but you want at least to learn a little bit more, you could be convinced to allow them to provide some additional information for your further review. And then the third number is 3, is a candidate that you just don't think is a good fit for you, or based on what you've seen in the material as well. And so as I go through these processes, and as the work that you've ultimately reviewed as well, just kind of keep those numbers in line. And then at the end, after I've gone through the packet of candidates that I think will be of interest to you, I'm going to go back, and we've got a quick Excel spreadsheet. We can quickly track where everybody's candidate numbers are. And it's like a golf score. Low scores, the lower the score, the better off that you will be. And we'll look at what those numbers look like, and where the ones and the threes may shake itself out as well. We've gone, there has been some changes in the past. We used to be able to kind of just triage a lot for you and give you kind of the list of, here are the folks that we think are the most best fitting for what we think you're looking for. But based upon some recent decisions out of the Attorney General's Office, basically, you've got to do this the way we're talking about it now, where you do this in public and identify those candidates and help go through this triage process. So I apologize in advance. This takes a little bit more time than we would otherwise do, but hopefully, given the fact that you've reviewed some of the material, that'll help us go forward as well. So after that, after we go through that, and we've narrowed down who you're selecting for your semifinalist, I'll talk a little bit about what the next steps look like, and then also show you an updated search timeline to take into account the process. So as always, our folks normally know not to contact you, but if you get any contacts from any of these candidates, please just refer them back either to Michael or myself, or your staff can refer them back to us as well. We'd just like to make sure that all the candidates get the same information at the same time. It keeps the process and the integrity of the search going forward much cleaner as well. Now, I will tell you, from doing this from a lot of different times, with a lot of different councils across the country, this is always a bit of a challenge, because what you're looking at is what the candidates have told us at this point. And so we see a cover letter and a resume, and I'm going to be able to kind of unpack some additional information from insights we've got. You may have started to do some Googling search and things of that nature. That's certainly understandable. But recognize what I, this is a slide that I used before, that we're literally at the front end of this process of what I call funnel. So at this point, we know a little about a lot of people. And there's going to be some stuff out there. I can tell you the nature of this business. There's always some material, and there's some folks that have some media exposures. Some of that, because they may have been in other searches, we can maybe help unpack to a greater extent. But generally speaking, what we're looking for is that will shake itself out to a much greater depth of understanding at the semifinalist level. And so you don't want to spend all your time and money at the front end of the search of identifying all this stuff, because you're not today selecting your final candidate. All you're doing is narrowing the pool down. And then the next round, when you select your candidates for your finalists, you'll have a lot more information at your hand, at your disposal, to help make those decisions. So please recognize that we know that there are some, there are some pieces of material on that. It's not uncommon to see that in city manager searches, both here in the state and across the country as well. And as I say, mentioned going forward, as you identify these folks, we're going to be asking them to respond to a much more detailed questionnaire about their background, their history, why they left their previous search, anything that might be of controversy to them, anything that's likely to come up in media searches, because that's when we start peeling that onion skin back and understanding those things greater. So our focus is let the candidate at least explain what's going on. There's always two sides. Many of you are in, or you're all in public service. You all know that it kind of comes with a lot of media baggage that comes back and forth in terms of debates, and there's always another side of the story. We'll, I'll help you unpack that, but just recognize, we're not going to have all that for you today, and that's really the next step that we learn as we start to do that as semifinalist. And then clearly, as we go forward, after that material, and you've looked at questionnaires, responses, and media searches, and video interviews, that, it gets a lot easier to get narrowed down to your final three to five folks that you're going to be selecting typically as your final candidates. And at that point, then we do even a deeper dive on those folks. Now, we do a full-blown stage-two media search on them. We will certainly do criminal history, credit, background, academic searches, legal, if they're involved in illegal issues or legal lawsuits, things of that nature, and also certainly a full-blown reference checks of a 360 kind of valuation. So realize, you're at the top end of this funnel right now. We're not going to have all that information, but the next step, we start to peel those onion skins back a little bit greater. So in terms of the marketing of this position, we were here late last year. We kind of taught, explained, trying to hit the ground running and try to get as much of this done as possible before the holiday window. That certainly was the case, as you can see from this area. We actually left this position open a little bit longer. We had a number of folks that we were in contact with around the holidays, and because of that holiday window, we provided some additional time for them to continue to complete their application materials. So you've seen where it's appeared in our blasts and our outreaches and the efforts. On top of that, we certainly have placed the advertisements in a variety of approved advertisement and trade associations that you had approved. And then above and beyond that, Michael and I went back and looked at previous SGR searches of comparable-sized cities and dynamics and the types of issues you faced. We shot out directly to about 225 prospective candidates that had been top-tier candidate in other searches that SGR's been involved with and said, hey, take a look at this. If this is something you're interested in, we'd be more than glad to do it. And a number of those folks ultimately did decide to apply. And then above and beyond that, we certainly carried on our discussion between Mike's networks and my networks about other folks that are in the business to make sure that they're aware of the opportunity here in Palm Coast. At the end of the day, that resulted in about 38 candidates, close to 40 candidates. That's about what I would have expected, given your size of the city and what we're seeing in the marketplace. I don't know if I mentioned when I was here before, as recently as three, four, or five years ago, a position like this might have gotten 60 or 70 applicants. What's happened is that the demographics have changed post-COVID, plus the demographics of a lot of aging baby boomers now moving themselves out of the marketplace. And so with that, we've seen a dramatic reduction in terms of the number of candidates that typically apply for these positions. So don't take that as a reflection upon Palm Coast. That really is something we've seen. We work hard to get a good quality pool to be developed. But if you talk to any of us, both with SGR or any of our competing firms, they'll all tell you the same thing, that we work a lot harder to get a quality pool pulled together because the raw numbers of folks are just smaller that are interested in pursuing local government activities, and certainly the positions of city managers. This was an assistant city manager. We'd probably have double the applications, without a doubt. Everybody likes to be number two, but when you're at the point of the spear, it makes it a little more challenging. A lot of folks are debating whether that's what they want to do going forward. So this position, you can see the different demographics. We had, it was a national search. We had 18 different states represented. And not surprisingly, because what happens is when candidates apply for positions, they're involved in other search activities, or at some point, as they start doing further research and they decide it's not the best fit, or it's not the best time after a further review, we lost a few candidates, and so we were down, we lost three candidates that originally applied. So we had 35 candidates at the end of the day that were still actively in the search as of this morning as well. The demographics of those, you can see largely, 38 largely male, although a number of female, and you can see the different races and ethnicity backgrounds that were represented as well through the pool. So I just want to go back to the point, as you review your candidates as we go through this triage process, with the brochure that you ultimately approved outlined a variety of components that you were looking for in the position. You're looking for a bachelor's degree as a minimum level of educational attainment, with a master's preferred. You're looking for about eight years of progressively responsive work as a city manager, or working as a department, and understanding kind of the size and complexities of your operations. You also expressed, a number of you have military backgrounds yourselves. A number of you had expressed some concepts about trying to see if there were some folks that have some military experience that might be interested in the position. You've seen, we did attract some of those folks as well. You also were looking at some folks that, let's look at some external folks that might have some non-traditional background. I think you've got a couple- I think you've got a couple of folks in here that we think might be potentially of interest to you as well in that regard. And then the other components were ICMA, the International City County Management Association. They have a credentialing program called a credentialed manager or ICMA CM. It's a commitment to professional development. It's you go through a peer review process, a self-evaluation process, ultimately become a candidate. Once you get your ICMA CM category or category designation, it requires you to maintain at least 40 hours of professional development experience. And there's an ongoing review and monitoring process. So it's a commitment to professional development. We have a number of folks that are ICMA credentialed managers in your pool as well. And then some of the other things that came up through my conversations with you, as well as what were put in the brochure and just our understanding your operations, you have a number of big city challenges here. You're a growing community. You've got utility issues. You've got growth management issues. You've got a brand new board, for the most speaking. Most of you are just in your first terms in this in this role. Also, you've got challenges that many of our communities face in terms of recruitment and retention, things of that nature, and succession planning. So as we're, Michael and I are looking through these candidates and looking at the candidates, that's kind of the lens that we're using to try to identify folks that we think might be of interest to you as well. So with that in mind, I've broken these down into.
Doug, can you?
Oh, yes.
Can you hold up for just one second?
Certainly.
Bring it back to the dials for a second. Of all the people that he's going to be presenting today, does anyone on the city council know any of these people personally or professionally? Any of these applicants that are being brought forth today?
Other than Jim Manfree.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot Mr. Manfree. Other than Jim Manfree, does anyone? Okay, that's I just wanted to clear the clear the air on that. Go right ahead, Doug.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mayor. Not a problem at all. So what I've done is broken this down because as we looked at this, we've broken down into what I call kind of traditional city manager candidates that we think are potentially of interest to you. These are folks that have gone through various department head positions, have been city managers, maybe in smaller communities, worked their way up. It's folks that we would normally see applying for these types of positions. The other category we've got is what I call non-traditional. We had several others. We lost a few of those, but we have basically folks that aren't necessarily following a traditional path, but nonetheless, might have the background or insights that you might be looking for in this position. So I've broken them into two different categories. And then the other piece that I've put, and I'm not prepared, I'm prepared if we need be to go through it, there are a variety of other candidates that have applied that we just don't think either have the background, the skills, the insights, the perspectives to be able to help you manage it. We've given you those candidates' names. I can certainly pull those candidates up as necessary if there's a desire to go there. So at the end, as I go through the traditional, non-traditional, I'll pause and say, is there any other candidates that you've seen in your material that you would like me to present? We can quickly bring those slides up and talk through them as well, because at the end of the day, it's your selection, not my selection of what matters, and that's the process that you need to follow here in the state. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'm going to go through the traditional ones first. These are set up by alphabetical order by their first name, so don't imply or don't think that because they're first, they're any higher in terms of any of the other candidates. And we'll just work our way through the list from there. But hopefully, with the material you've got, we'll be able to address it. So the first candidate is Bradley Goschel. And as I said, I'm going to go through these relatively high, but I'll add some insights because you've had a chance to review this. I've seen Bradley in a couple of my other searches. I do a number of searches up in the Northeast, and he has applied in a number of those communities, although he has applied to some other positions here in in Florida as well. Has doing some contractual work with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to help communities kind of with technical services and assistance. That's kind of a side gig, if you will, with regards to that. But his current position is Township Manager with the Township of Lowell, Paxton, Pennsylvania. Community about half your size, 53,000, a good sized organization, and one of the largest in that particular area as well. Bradley has gone through a variety of different positions in different smaller communities as well. He has kind of advanced, he kind of grew up in in interested in local government, as you saw in his background. He had some elected background experience as well as an elected official, and that kind of got him into the role, and he's worked his way up through a variety of different communities. But his current position, about 53,000 in population, a budget of about $100 million with about 173 full-time employees and about 69 part-time, has been involved in some infrastructure improvements and bond issuing resolutions as well, things of nature that I think would be of interest here as well. And then you've seen in some of his other positions, some of the smaller communities, smaller organizations, but nonetheless, has been in a variety of capacities in the lead position as a manager. And then also, previous work as working as an office manager in the county of Scullykill, Pennsylvania, up in the the Philadelphia area as well. And then, as I mentioned, was once an elected official as well earlier in his career. Does bring a master's degree in public administration and a bachelor's degree in public policy. And I will tell you that, as I said, we've seen him in a couple of other searches. He's been a semifinalist in a couple of my searches, so I've seen some video interviews of him and some of his his responses as well. His next candidate, Brian Boltis. I know Brian very well. His most recent position was the city of Clermont. I actually did the search for him or for Clermont that resulted in him being hired there. I will tell you, his council has changed dramatically, and as a result, he's decided to look elsewhere. Every manager at some point makes that decision if they don't think that they're aligned with where they think the council and the community may be going and going forward. But Brian is a top-notch candidate as well, having and we've fully vetted him as he went through that process back in 2021 in Clermont. Prior to that, Brian served as the city manager up in Acworth from 96 to 2021, and then also had a stint up as a city manager in the city of Mount Morris, Michigan, a smaller community for about six years. Brian is one of the international city county management credentialed managers. As I say, I've also done some additional recruitment when Brian was up in Clermont, so I know their organization pretty well. I know their their dynamics. Their overall budget in Clermont is about $140 million and about 51 million of that is in general fund. But the other piece that I think would be of interest with regards to Brian is Clermont has been exploding. That whole I-27 corridor through the central part of the state has been in a massive growth. A lot of growth in utilities, a lot of growth in services and dynamics and police stations, fire stations, all those types of things that are taking place. And so knowing Brian personally from that search and the process, and he's certainly had a stellar background career elsewhere. The other thing that I want to highlight is that although certainly this is close to 50,000, it's a pretty good sized community as well. I will tell you, some of these communities that were, some of the candidates we're going to talk about are coming from smaller communities. That we have to help decipher that. In some cases, the way in which you manage a smaller community of maybe a 15,000 or 20,000 population works different than the way in which you're managing an organization of this size and the number of people you have. You typically have to rely more on your staff and you spend a lot more time with you as elected officials as a city manager in a community of this size than a manager in some smaller community. So one of the things that we do, although we do have some some candidates that come from larger organizations, we always make a sense of how much that candidate can pivot from being kind of a a day-to-day manager of a small community to something larger. And I can tell you from my own experience as well, when I was recruited in Lakeland, I came from a community that was around 15,000 in population, but we serviced about 50,000. We were the largest city in a particular county. And the way in which we operate was much different. And I, when I came to Lakeland, it was about 75,000. When I left, it was about 125,000. So I've I've been through that transition myself. I kind of know what it looks to feel to do that. So as you think of some of these candidates that are coming from smaller communities, recognize that we're going to help understand whether they can make that type of transition because it is a different transition. I just wanted to highlight that, that having been through that myself, I think I can add some particular good insights in that regard. So as I say, Brian, I think is a strong candidate, has Florida experience clearly, has operated here, understands those dynamics of operating in in government in sunshine and all the dynamics that comes with being a city manager here in the state of Florida as well. Next candidate, Brian Gohagen. We have seen Brian in a couple of my other searches as well. Brings about 25 years in law enforcement background and then moved into positions of of city management and operations as well. Certainly had some FEMA experience as well. His he's not really in the business at the moment. He had left Howell Township, New Jersey, comparable size of about 54,000, similar to what we just mentioned with Brian Boltis as well. And he's now looking for something to get back into the city manager arena as well. So in Howell Township, which would be the closest operation to here, about 61 square mile community, staff about 350, capital budget's about $75 million overall. So fairly good sized dynamics, has done some teaching, obviously, with Fairleigh Dickinson University, has a business administrator in Highlandsboro, a smaller community for about a year, business administrator, city manager, city administrator. You'll see these titles change from state to state, but they're all fairly comparable in terms of their roles and responsibilities. And then was at a business administrator, a comparable lead position for relatively small community in Ship Bottom, New Jersey. Is a certified public manager, but also brings a master's and a bachelor's degree. Caesar Garcia. Caesar brings about 20 years of experience in municipal management to the table as well. Has been involved in a city that has been an all-American city, which speaks to best management practices and operations and community engagement. In terms of some background on his effort, he really comes from a Parks and Recreation experience background as well, as you can see, as a department head and kind of moved up and then moved into different positions and ultimately has been in the city manager position for community in La Marque, excuse me, Texas, about 20,000, been there for about a little over two years now. But basically brings Parks and Recreation, community experience, community engagement type experience to the table. He is a certified public manager, also a certified Parks and Recreation professional. These are professional development commitments that we like to see in the process. In his current position, budget's a little smaller, about 20 million general fund, about $8 million utility operations, and close to $100 million in capital improvement budgets and processes as well. And as I said, has about 200 employees that he's involved with working in his current position. And then obviously, working in some smaller organizations as a as a director going forward. Chris Edwards. I know Chris from when I ironically, I met Chris when I was doing the work in New Smyrna Beach. He was the Economic Development Director in New Smyrna Beach when we were doing that city manager searches last summer as well. So Chris decided to to look on, and he's looking for a new opportunity at this stage. We often see folks that come from economic development and public works and and finance into these roles because they tend to touch a lot of different operations of a city. Economic development folks have to work with the utility folks, have to work with your transportation folks, have to work with boards and commissions and planning commission for zoning and all those types of issues as well. So Chris comes, I think he's our only kind of pure economic development person that is in this search. But he has, he served obviously for a couple of years in New Smyrna Beach and brings that kind of economic development experience to the table. Smaller budget because of smaller staff and the CRA operations. He has done also some private sector work as a real estate agent, but then also worked in our state capital at the city of Tallahassee, the capital city, as a deputy director for Economic Vitality, and then also a business advocate, working with the city manager's office there as well. And then also had some work in Marion County as the economic development liaison. And so as I said, a component of your work was economic diversification. As I say, we we often see city economic development directors and county economic development directors apply for these types of positions. And I know Chris is very much interested in staying here in the state of Florida and was was one of the first candidates that contacted me right after we knew about this search opening up as well. Chris also brings a master's and a bachelor's degree as a certified as well. Cynthia Raleigh, city manager in Palacios, Texas, a smaller community, been there for a couple of years in 2022, but also brings some background from a water supply corporation. In Texas, we have a lot of, they have a lot of municipal utility districts and some private sector utilities that run water and sewer and things of that nature. She wasn't in the lead there, but handled some business and operations, so she has her familiarity with utility issues as well. And then Shirts, a variety positions with the city of Shirts, Texas, as Public Works Project Manager, and then a variety of different administrative type roles as well. She's also a certified public manager, a CPM position as well. And her budgets currently, she manages in her current community about 40 FTEs and only about $7 million, plus obviously a CIP budget above and beyond there as well. So a little smaller community, but we like the fact that she had some of that background in the utility operations as well. Next candidate was Darren Caldwell. Darren is currently the city manager of Page, Arizona. And that operation is about 200 employees, close to $100 million in in the budget overall. Has has had some collective bargaining negotiation experience as well that he noted as well. He also has been a county administrator in Lincoln County, Montana, for a couple of years, also a candidate that had been elected office, so has an understanding of your position from that point as well. And then obviously, his own business and has a bachelor's degree, but not a master's degree. David Stroll. David's a candidate that I have known over the years. David has been a finalist in several of my searches. So I've he's gone through our process. The last one was probably about a year and a half ago. He was a finalist, one of the finalists we had for the city of Largo, a comparable sized community, about 100,000 over in in Vanellus County. So we've seen him there, but I've had him as a finalist in two other searches as well. Currently, he's doing some interim work. He's an interim HR director in Crest Hill, Illinois. Prior to that, he was a deputy county manager for a short period of time, also assisting in their operations, much larger, about 655,000 in population. And then, as I said, he's gone through some interim components as well in in Schiller Park. When I last was involved with him pretty extensively is after shortly after he left the city administrator as the city of Fallon, Missouri, comparable sized community that you had. Challenging council there, some dynamics there. As I said, we we unpacked that in some of his other searches, so we were pretty comfortable about his departure in that regard. And basically, David's looking for the next opportunity. So he's been in some of these these capacities, just trying to find the next window. But as I said, I've seen him as a finalist in several of my searches and is a good solid candidate and does have experience in in running a community of this size as well. You can see he also was an assistant village manager in Prospect, Illinois, and served for a year as the acting manager. I'm sure that Lauren will tell you, the 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 time in the seat as an acting manager is professionally challenging, but also professionally rewarding. At some opportunity, you have to make those decisions that you don't necessarily get to make as an as an assistant. So overall, as you can see in his, when he was with Jefferson County, that was a government close to $950 million budget, 2,500 employees, 650,000 residents. When he was in Schiller Park, that was a budget of about 25 million with about 100 FTEs. And then in O'Fallon, about $121 million budget, 444 FTEs, close to 87,000 in population. Brings water, wastewater, utility experience, development experience, economic development experience as well. Denise Fitzgerald. Denise is currently the township manager in Scott Township, Pennsylvania. Been there since 2001, pretty pretty strong run. The average tenure of a manager is about five to seven years nationally. So when you you've been there since 2001, you obviously have been doing some things appropriately and and the community supports and appreciates the service she provides. In a similar effort, she had served for about nine years in a borough manager in Plum Borough Township, a little larger community, about 26,000. Another one of our International City County Management Association credentialed managers. In her current position, she has about 100 FTEs, budgets of about $33 billion, a general full-service type service city. And as I said, brings kind of a stability with regards to some of the positions she has been in as a as a manager or as a city manager or township manager in this case. Dickrun Kiergillian III. I've had Rick in a couple of my searches. He's been looking for some opportunities here in the state of Florida and a couple of other places that SGR has been involved with as well. He brings about 15 years of experience and really has kind of an interesting background, as you've seen in his 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 resume and the process. So right now, his most recent position was town administrator of Georgetown, Colorado. Smaller community. I've I've done some work with the Town of Vale, and we do a lot of work in and around the Denver area. So these ski towns that are very much involved have a massive influx of tourism. So even though it's a small community, it often has, they say, I think he's identified that they have close to 1.3 million tourists that come to that community per year. that they have close to one point three million tourists that come to that community per year. Town of Vale is a comparable operation. They come from all over the world in the effort. So high customer contact, high service demands, high touch, if you will, with regards to community engagements and operations. They've been since some changes there. I will tell you, we've seen that happen in a number of those, those kind of tourist ski towns, if you will, out, out in Colorado. Decided to, to move on on his own accord at that point as well. So not surprisingly, smaller budget, smaller number of personnel as well. Was also in Brush, Colorado, as assistant city administrator and community development director, so would have had planning and zoning and components as well. Once again, smaller type of budget, staff relatively, but would be involved in economic development, involved in planning and zoning and some of the growth management issues you're facing here. The reason I say Rick brings an interesting background, he has this position in earlier from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty for a good ten-year run, working with the, as, as the executive director, a founder of this group called City Hope Alliance. It's a five oh one C three nonprofit, but worked very closely in working with the city administrator, the department of heads and city leadership in that area to help them talk about community engagements and efforts. So I like that background in terms of community engagements and willingness to work closely with your residents and help be that bridge, if you will, to city services and programs as well. And so it brings a master's degree, also brings a master's degree in theological studies. We don't often see that, but there's some good grace we sometimes need in this business as well. And then a bachelor's degree in sociology and community analysis and development. Jerome Orjay Wilverding. His most recent position was county administrator in San Willcon County, California, obviously much larger as a county, close to eight hundred thousand in population. Served there from two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-four, a three-year stint as the county administrator, and prior to that was their auditor and controller, their CFO-type position from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-one. So had been there, moved up in the process. They had gone through some challenges and changes based on what we had seen as well. Their operation's obviously much bigger, about two point nine billion dollar county, close to eight thousand employees overall. Directly as the county administrator, had close to twenty operational reports. They also incorporated the county hospital on a clinic system and, you know, as I said, had kind of worked his way up to that position, is now looking for the next opportunity. Prior to that, he was a chief accountant in Contra Costa County, California. Once again, a very large county out in California, one point two million, had served in that role from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen. Prior to that, had been largely in the private sector, in the financial arena business as well. Brian is also, or Jay also is a certified internal auditor, was also a certified fraud examiner. It doesn't keep that current, but in his background, he was, that was, that was in his experience as well. Kara Bowles, the next candidate, one of our engineers. We have a couple of engineers that have come into this position. Currently serves as city engineer from two thousand and seventeen to, from two thousand and seventeen and prior to that as the deputy director with the Department of Public Works in South Bend, Indiana. So comparable-sized community, obviously a Midwestern community, a hundred thousand in population, has done some teaching, has also done some work in the private sector in consulting engineer, running projects and efforts, largely civil work for municipal clients and government operations. Was also an assistant city engineer, Department of Public Works and Utilities in Elkhart, Indiana, about half the size of this area as well, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. Is a, obviously brings a doctor of philosophy, a master's degree, two different master's degree, and then also is currently an engineer, a registered engineer in the state of Indiana. Not that this is an engineering position, but we, you have a lot of infrastructure challenges here, and we do see these types of positions. And with that engineering background, both with public sector and private sector type work, we were impressed with her background, realizing she's not been in the lead as a city manager, but the number of capital projects and the number of issues you're facing here, we thought was a pretty strong fit. And we've got a couple of folks that have some engineering background and experience here as well. So her current operation, she manages about twenty-three employees in her current position, about a four hundred and twenty-four million dollar budget overall, and about a hundred million dollar actual CIP type activities with a lot of project management work. And as I said, also had done some private sector work in addition to her public sector work. So we like, liked that experience, given your issues you're facing here in Palm Coast. Melissa Davis. Melissa brings about twenty years of experience in the local government operation, a little bit of a, a different focus. So she's currently servicing with the city of Atlanta, obviously a much larger community. As a deputy commissioner, she's in interim capacity overseeing their fleet services. Prior to that, she had worked as a senior director of administration and finance. And so pretty large-sized budgets, a hundred million dollar type budgets, you know, seven hundred plus employees in different capacities as well. So has been in kind of lead positions within certain, certain departments. Had also been a financial, the senior financial manager with the Department of Public Works there with about thirty, fifty-five million dollar budgets and solid waste services and operations. So has been in a variety of capacities in the operational fields and then also has been a senior performance auditor with the city of Atlanta Auditor's Office for six years as well. So brings more of a financial concept, but has some operational experience in some line departments. She is a certified local government finance officer and a certified government auditing professional, which is some of the background credentials you've seen. Michael Reese. Michael reached out to me shortly after this position opened as well, so I got a chance. He's a fellow Bowling Green graduate, although I didn't know him prior to this search. I don't run into many BG grads very often, undergraduates. But most recently, he served as a city manager in Maplewood, Missouri, a small community for a couple of years, and had really done some pretty impressive things in a relatively short period of time. But where Michael and I first kind of talked about this position was his work that he had done with the positions under the office of Mayor Michael Coleman with the city of Columbus, Ohio. Obviously, a very large dynamic organization, close to a million in population. Served as chief of staff for, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fifteen and then a variety of other positions working through that. I had an opportunity to really talk a lot about this, this position with Michael. I was recently, I'm from Ohio, my senior, I, I went to high school in Ohio and so had some friends and knew a lot of folks in Columbus. But most recently, the International City County Management Association held their annual conference in Columbus, and so we had a chance to kind of revisit it. I was blown away with the transformation of what I've seen happen during the window of time that he was there in their downtown, the redevelopment, the dynamics, the processes, the financial stability. Columbus really became what I thought was a world-class city. And so we talked about the challenges that were taking place here, although he is, when he made that move from there, he's done some water work on, on a trade association as well, so he understands utilities and bonding issues as well. But I really liked his overall understanding. So somewhat of a non-traditional because he's not kind of been a city manager, but as a chief of staff and a strong mayor, former government, you basically are operating like a city manager. The department has a reporting to you, you're handling the day-to-day, the, the mayor is kind of doing the thing as the overall chief elected official. And so I was pretty impressed with Michael, and I think the more we talked about this opportunity and the opportunities that he might be able to bring to the table, I thought he would be a strong candidate for your consideration. When he made the move to Maplewood, it was obviously one of the Gien city management, it was a pretty small community and the dynamics just were not quite what he was looking for in terms of a bigger city. But I'm pretty comfortable, given that, given your, your regional location and the size and the challenge you've got, that he's got a pretty strong background of consideration, pretty strong budgets, very strong operations experience, things as well, and certainly has a master's as well as a bachelor's, which kind of completed the operations for you as well. Patrick Kaminsky. I've gotten to know Patrick over the last couple of searches that I've done. Patrick has been involved in a couple of my Florida searches of recent. I've gotten comfortable, I know that probably you've seen some material about his most recent position in Mount Dora. I will tell you, Mount Dora's gone through some transitions. I've known several of the previous managers in Mount Dora. It's a very, very challenging community, it's a very charming community, but it brings its own level of dynamics. I've gotten comfortable about some of the background, the, the issues of why he left. He's provided you a wealth of material from a variety of other communities that I think provides some, some commentary with regards to how he was viewed by folks outside of the government and outside of the leadership that he was kind of challenged with there in Mount Dora. And so, but if you look over his previous years of experience, he's got a pretty stable level of, of experience in a variety of communities. I will tell you that I think sometimes you run into these snags where you just run into a wall and you just have to work your way through it. I, I've had him as a semifinalist, so I've seen some of his material. I think he's a well-spoken individual and I think he brings a wealth of experience, although from a smaller type community, I do believe he does have that capacity to step into a larger organization such as this. And he's really looking for the next opportunity. His wife, he's a Florida, Florida grad and his wife's from, native of Florida, so they're looking to stay in the state, so he's made a conscious decision not to necessarily look outside of the state at this point for most of his, his search activities. As I said, I've seen him in a couple of my searches. I think, I think he's a strong candidate and certainly worthy of some consideration if you wanted to take him to the next level as well. Next candidate, Patrick Jordan. I don't, although I spent twenty years up in, in Michigan, I don't know Patrick directly, but I have seen him in some recent searches of recent. Ionia County is his current position, comparable size, a little smaller than you, a county operation, not a city, but in Michigan, fairly comparable operations that you would face. Has been there since two thousand and twenty-two, about a forty million dollar operation there. Eskenaba, Michigan, I'm familiar with that, it's basically up in the, the upper peninsula area. Served there from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two, had water, electric, wastewater, finance, full-service operations there. Did some work as a county administrator in Wexford County as well for a couple of years, and then actually had two stints up in Alaska. Every once in a while, we find some candidates that go up to Alaska. Most of Alaska boroughs are relatively small, had served there for a couple of different communities, relatively smaller areas. And then also worked in Tarrant County, in Tarrant County, Texas, the DFW area, obviously from two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven. Was a supervisor in Muskegon, Michigan. I used to be in, in Alma, Michigan, and also Grand Haven. Muskegon was just our north, so I'm very familiar with that community as well. Served as a manager or supervisor there from two thousand and four to oh eight. Also brings a master's degree and a bachelor's degree as well. So had served in a variety of different communities, both larger and smaller, but certainly has a, has a wealth of experience from a couple of different states. Paul Trembino is a candidate that I've not had in other searches before, but I was impressed with his background. The, currently servicing as the public works director with the city of Greeley, Colorado. It's in the kind of an outward suburb, I hate to call it a suburb, it's really its own standalone community outside of Denver. About a hundred thousand in population, pretty comparable to your size as well. But I was really impressed, as I said, when I got to know his background a little bit more, in very high senior-level positions and state positions, running transportation, homeland security, things of that nature as well. And so from working with the state of Iowa as director of homeland security, a chief operating officer, and also director of the Department of Transportation, two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen. A big, major infrastructure developments, working with a lot of elected officials, working on major policy issues as well. Had done some private sector consulting with his own, with McClure Engineering for a couple of years, and then also has worked in very high-level positions in leadership with the Department of Transportation with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Director of the transit, local roads, rails, harbors, operations, director of the Bureau of Statewide Structures and Highway Contracts and Bid Letting. Another one of our engineers as well, and PE carrying licenses in Wisconsin and Colorado as well. But I thought, especially given your dynamics of your major capital infrastructure improvements and given the scale and scope, that he was a strong candidate for your consideration. Redman Jones. I've, I haven't seen Redman recently. I've had Redman in a couple of my searches earlier. Most recently, he served as a deputy city manager in Iowa City, Iowa, a community comparable in size, a little smaller, but comparable for a couple of years out there. And then prior to that, had served as a city administrator in West Branch for, from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one. And then most, prior to that, has Florida experience here as a city manager and the CRA manager up in Groveland, over in Lake County, from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen. He's done his own private consulting operations, so he's been in that role as well from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fourteen. And then prior to that, worked in a comparable-sized community as the assistant to the city administrator and affirmative action officer in Davenport, Iowa. So in terms of just kind of scale and scope, so in Iowa City, about a four hundred and fifty-seven million dollar operation, close to eighty million dollars in general fund. In West Branch, I'm sorry, I don't have his budget there, in West Branch. In Groveland, obviously a little smaller community, but certainly brings Florida experience as well. I highlighted a couple of the programs. Redman has been involved in two of the more senior executive institutes that we see in this business. One's the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard for the University of Senior Executives in state and local government, and the other is the Welton Cooper School, the University of Virginia Senior Executive Institute. Those are both very well-respected, where you're there, you're intensive programming, you're there for several weeks on campus going through and engaging as well. So really appreciate his background. He gave you a lot, his background, about kind of his style of management and his philosophy as he comes together. My sense is he's looking to get back into Florida. I have not talked to Redman recently, but as I said, from time to time, I have seen him look at some opportunities here in the state. Next candidate, Richard Howell. Richard brings a little bit of the military background and then most recently in the position of a public works director, a position and a highway commissioner up in Walworth County, Wisconsin. So we had a couple of folks that kind of came out of the PE and public works type background, and given your, your public works and dynamics and challenges and infrastructure issues, I thought his background might be a good fit for you as well, coupled with obviously his kind of strategic and oversight responsibility that he had in the work as a, in the military. So his current budget is about sixteen million dollar operating, but anywhere from ten to thirty million dollars in capital-type projects. Handles, you know, public works, facilities, fleet, solid waste, roadways, things of that nature. And then a lot of logistics and strategic planning and operational-type work within the, the military positions that he's held as well, and has certainly gunned through some variety of, of the types of work and type of capital challenges that I suspect you'd be facing here. Next candidate, Robert Hemminger. So Robert is currently the city manager of Iowa Colony, Texas, from two thousand and twenty-one to present. Came up through an emergency management planning background as well, so a little bit of a non-traditional effort. We haven't seen that position, the manager role, very often, but has been there now for, going on four years. Deer Park, Texas, comparable, a little double the size of where he was at presently, but then also was an emergency management director and coordinator in Pasadena, Texas, so comparable, to size to what you're facing here, but in a different role as well. So smaller community now, but given his experience and as a manager and given his interest in looking at, at kind of moving up to the next size city, wanted to make sure you had a chance to see his background. Next candidate, Scott Moy. Scott, I got to know Scott, he was a finalist in the position we had down in New Smyrna Beach. So I know he was starting to look to get back to Florida, as you could see, he's got some Florida experience as well. So he most recently went through a full-blown assessment and evaluation processes. I can tell you, he left recently, he's had three new board members. Their dynamics and the direction that he's facing up in his current, in his most recent community in Ware County as county, county manager, they made a decision that he wanted to not go where they wanted to go in terms of the direction, the future direction of the organization, so resigned on his own and is now looking for the next opportunity. So he was in that role for a couple of years. Prior to that, he once served, you saw, there's a gap there, but it was because he had other positions, but he previously served as an assistant to the county manager from ninety-three to ninety-eight to obviously a different manager during that era. Had some private sector experience, working with the Mayo Clinic as a procedure-to-pay, a procure-to-pay operation. Does some, has done some teaching in the past. Was also a city administrator in Blackshear, Georgia, from two thousand and four to two thousand and thirteen, pretty good, strong run there as well. And then a deputy city manager and interim city manager in Fernandina Beach from two thousand and two thousand and four. So he certainly brings that Florida experience and, and understanding of those dynamics that we face here. And just to give you a sense of his current position in Ware County, about fifty million dollars, fifteen different departments, close to three hundred and fifty employees, full-service type operations, and as I said, we've, we've seen, we've seen Scott in a, in a most recent search and so brings some solid experience as well as Florida experience to you. And then the last, but not least candidate within the traditional bucket that we have is William Lawrence. William Lawrence comes from a law enforcement background, has worked largely in smaller communities as police chief, town manager, as you can see in a variety of those areas, has expressed some interest. I've seen him apply for some different positions, so I know he's interested in kind of moving up as well. He's currently in Lady Lake, has been there for about four years. Brings about thirty-seven years of experience at the table. Challenge that William has, although he does have an associate, so does not have a bachelor's or a master's degree, but I, given his background in city management, I wanted to make sure that at least you had that and got a chance to see his experience for consideration. The non-traditional, we have two candidates. First candidate is Drew Wilson. Drew is one of our attorneys, brings about thirty years of experience. This is truly a non-traditional candidate at the local government level, but I was intrigued by his public policy and work, especially at the federal level, and involved with the kind of the highest levels of experience in working both with a, a US-centered and a Democratic leader, Harry Reid, from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen as chief of staff, and also his work as the United States Sergeant of Arms and Deputy Sergeant of Arms with the United States Senate from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fifteen, and then again from twenty, two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. Has done a lot of public policy analysis, a lot of fundraising activities. The senior vice president of corporate and external affairs for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, he highlighted about the number of dollars he was able to bring in. I'm intrigued with his background. I don't necessarily see a lot of water, wastewater, local planning, zoning, but nonetheless, obviously has been in a very senior position at a very high level in a public organization, both in the Senate and working for the highest levels of elected officials that we have here in the country as a, as a senator leader as well. Brings a, obviously not surprising, his attorney, a JD degree and both, and a master's degree in public administration and a bachelor's degree in government. And then your last candidate, the candidate mayor that you mentioned as well. I put him in the non-traditional because it's, we don't often see sheriffs become city managers, but it's not uncommon, I guess, in the sense we sometimes see law enforcement folks but it's not uncommon, I guess, in the sense we sometimes see law enforcement folks pursue higher levels of positions within local government. Jim Manfree is a resident of Palm Coast. He's currently an attorney, doing his own work. But as you know, and probably from your service in the community as a sheriff here in Flagler County, in two different terms, from 2013 to 2017 and from 2001 to 2005. Has done some attorney work on the side, and then also has been, earlier in his career, if you go back into his effort, he was a Deputy Town Attorney in Babylon, New York, and was also an Assistant District Attorney in Suffolk County up in New York as well. So as I said, you may know him to a greater extent than we do. Obviously brings a JD degree as well as a bachelor's in psychology. So the balance of the candidates that I've given to you, that I'm not necessarily showing here, are folks that I don't think necessarily have the prerequisite background, skills, experience, things of that nature that I think would be of interest to you. But before we stop and talk about rating any of these folks, were there any other folks that I didn't mention that may be in your list? And we have some slides we can bring up if need be. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Anyone have any other names that popped up that they were interested in? Anyone?
I do. Sonia, I don't want to butcher her last name. Sonia Alvez-Viveros?
I think Sonia or Tanya?
Sonia.
Sonia is one that withdrew. She is one of our candidates that withdrew. She was the manager up in New Jersey, right?
Yes, yes, and I liked her.
Yeah, I was sorry to see her withdraw as well. Yeah, I liked her background as well, Councilmember, absolutely.
Yeah, she was a really big candidate. Okay. I don't have any others that I wanted to see. I just have other questions, but I'll wait till we get to that point.
Anyone else had anyone that was not on that list that we've been presenting today?
I just want to confirm, John Vonglis withdrew.
Yes, he did, yes. John, Tracy Rolls, and Sonia were the three that had withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. He was a candidate I was intrigued by as well. He was my, one of my non-traditional candidates, and as you probably heard, he just withdrew late last week. Yep.
For us as a council, I would like to ask, I think we, a total of 38, we're down to 35. Are we, are you, as a council, comfortable with the applicants that we have received?
I am not.
You're not happy? Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I agree. I think we're a little top-heavy. There's several that are good candidates. I was hoping to see more so that we could find that perfect fit here for our city.
But you're not happy with the pool of candidates either?
No, I'd like to see more higher-end candidates.
Mr. Stevens?
I would as well.
So you're not comfortable with the pool of candidates? What about you, Councilman Gumbrough?
I think there's a few that are worth, you know, taking a look at, but we can't afford to get this decision wrong. And there's absolutely no reason to rush to failure. Our community deserves the right fit for us to move forward. We've got, we're growing fast, we've got all sorts of current issues that we need to address, and as much as I would like to proceed, to move forward, I think we need to continue to keep this open to receive more candidates. I think, I mean, I've got my top five based on the pool. There are some very intriguing candidates, but I think there's, I think the unicorn might still be out there, to use a vice mayor's term, and just, you know, I don't think we kept it open long enough, so that's where I'm at, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Doug, what would be the next step? I personally feel that because of the holidays, we probably short-changed this on our pool. What would be the next steps? What's contract, what does our contract say? And can we push it back to you? We stiff-arm it back to you and say, come back with some more candidates, open it back up and see where it goes from there?
Sure. Couple of things to react to on the area. Number one, we did push it beyond the holidays, because we still had candidates who were coming in, and I wanted to make sure I captured that. So as I said, originally, we're looking at 30 days, and it ended up being close to 45 or 47 days. So I was comfortable, we got past the craziness of the holidays to allow the candidates that were expressing some interest in applying. So I don't know that that was a factor, per se, because we did extend the deadline in that regard. There's a couple of things that I would suggest that you might want to do, because you've mentioned, maybe there's a handful of folks that you might want to proceed with at this stage. Candidates that are in one search may be involved in other searches. And I will tell you, as a City Manager, many times I've had folks, or I typically triage between, this is a definite I want to learn more about, this is kind of a lot I'm not sure about, and this one I'm not really comfortable that they've got the skills and the background. And I've had a number of times where the more I've learned about that candidate B pile, the more I've unpacked their background. In some cases, I've hired them as department heads, and I've certainly seen that happen, certainly as a consultant working with communities as well. So my suggestion would be twofold. Number one, we could continue to promote this position. We could continue to leave the position open. Nobody wants you to hire somebody that you're not, you know, comfortable with. That's not the end result we're looking for either. But in the same token, if there are some folks in this consideration that you might learn more about through the next level, I would suggest that we might want to at least get them moving on the questionnaires and some video responses and take a look. And then in the meantime, we could continue to market the position, but in the meantime, we don't lose the candidates that are in the pool that you might have some interest on, that may very well be your unicorn, but we just don't know yet until we go forward in that regard. So my suggestion would be is that you might want to still try to identify some folks, assuming there's some folks in this pool that you'd like to learn more about, that we at least get them going, and then we can make a decision as they finish that work, bring it back to you, we continue to market the position. If I see other folks that are coming in that I think are strong, we could certainly get them started along those same lines with questionnaires and video interviews. Does that make, is that a suggested approach that might make some sense?
Well, it's not, it's not a knock on any of these candidates, because, you know, everyone's career is different, and I understand that. But I don't think anyone is comfortable right now with the pool. Now, we could probably, if I could get consensus, we could probably try to narrow it down to five people and keep them in the pool, because some of them were just, you know, like your courses of action, you know, you always got that third course of action, just a throwaway course of action. You're not even going to consider them. So if we could come to a consensus, maybe narrow it down to five, keep those candidates in the pool, and then open it back up for like another month or so, and see where it goes from there. I just don't want to, I don't like people, everybody's applied for a job. And one thing that I always hated, if you apply for a job, is never hearing anything.
Right.
You know, that's horrible. That's a horrible way to treat people, and I never try to do that as a manager in Human Resources. So what would you guys think? What would the council think?
I've got a quick thought, real quick. So I Google searched, as I know, you know, the rest of us have here, a lot of these candidates. Do not send us a candidate, this is just my position, that when you Google them, you know, you find out, wow, they're pending a felony or, you know, something crazy like that. I know you haven't done a media search up front, but a simple Google search of somebody that is, that just pops up, is pending action, or was fired for adverse action, not because the council wanted to take a different direction with their current city manager. I mean, that's helpful for us. We don't need to be looking at people that are, you know, have got criminal activity going on. And so I would just ask, just upfront, peel those folks off.
Okay, that's note one, Doug. Mr. Stevens, Councilman Stevens?
I agree with Councilman Gumbrough.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I do agree with the sentiment that we should be concerned with if we extend this too long, that we potentially lose good candidates to other searches, other cities that are hiring. So I think trying to find a balance in between, leave it open, but continue forward with some candidates so that we can keep them in the cycle, keep them engaged so that they don't turn to other opportunities.
Okay. What about you, Vasir?
Yeah, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so I'm happy to narrow this down to five and keep moving forward with those. I will say, you know, I was looking at the New Smyrna presentation that you did, because you all did their search, and they just recently hired somebody. And I, you know, I'm concerned about a few of these people that were passed on by New Smyrna, because I think they have similar challenges as us in a lot of different ways.
Understood.
And so we can further engage in that conversation, whether it's today or another day. But I'm also concerned in looking at that presentation. It looks like SGR has a lot less subscribers since then, and also had less applicants. So I'm wondering, I know you explained earlier, there's been kind of this phasing out of some of the people that you would traditionally see applying, but I just want to make sure that we're using all resources, and maybe it's time to think a little more unconventionally about who we're reaching out to and how. Because I am also seeing a lot of the same names that were in that presentation and also this presentation, so a lot of the same applicants. And I've enjoyed working with you, Mr. Thomas. I think that we really need, though, for you to be super objective in this, because as you were even explaining some of these candidates and how they parted, or why they're not in their current positions that they were in, my assessment and reading, and I didn't just go to one source and read one source, but I read a lot of sources, and some of these were some pretty controversial departures. And my other concern, not just with the departure, but is with the job hopping. So a lot of these candidates, and some of the ones that you even put in the traditional applicant pool, were only in positions for two and three years. And not just one time, but we're talking, they've got a history of only being in positions for a couple of years, and that's not what we're looking for, that's not what our city needs. Our city has already experienced that. We're past that. We're better than that. We need better than that. So I'm really looking for somebody who wants to commit to us and is, you know, this is a, city manager is a political position. It's not an elected position, but it's a political position. So we really need somebody who can weather that storm and is willing to, you know, reach across the aisle, so to speak, so that the politics can kind of hopefully be removed from this as much as possible. So I know as, if we do, you know, cast out that net again, that's really, I think we need to kind of think about, where can we get that candidate?
So, yeah, a couple of things that I mentioned earlier about some changes that have been done because of an AG opinion there, I would concur with you. I do not like to see every couple of years, people moving around, but the way we're trying to follow and be consistent with what the state requires us to do, with showing folks that are qualified for the position. So I hear you, and that in earlier years, I might not have presented a couple of those folks that have moved around quite a bit as much, or some other dynamics that are at play. So I appreciate that, but we're trying to, we're trying to be consistent to make sure we don't run afoul of what, at least the state AG is trying to do with regards to selection processes. So I appreciate your comments, so, Councilmember.
Yeah, I've had a, I've had a few candidates, well, not possible candidates, that reached out to me post-closure, you know, so some people got through the holidays, and some of them are fairly local. So that would be, that would be what I would think, was we try to narrow it down to five people, cast the net again, see what we can get, maybe open up that opportunity for some of the local people that missed out on that application process, and, you know, I'm really leery of hiring somebody from across the country. Because I don't, really, as a professional, I don't want to hire someone and move them halfway across the country and then have to terminate them in two years. That's just, that's not just, that's not the way I like doing business. So are we good with that consensus on trying to narrow it down to, maybe you could take notes, Doug?
Five or six, or whatever the number you shake out. I just think that, I think there's probably some folks in there that I think, from my standpoint, you ought to at least take a look at. You're not hiring them at this point. All I'm saying is I want to, I want to learn more about them, and if that gets to a smaller number while we continue to market, I will be glad to, be glad to do that. I just, I hate to lose some folks that potentially could be that diamond in the rough until we don't know what they had to say.
Okay, and what would that look like? How would we go through vetting those people, us individually, because we're five individual people with five individual trains of thought? So how will we go about that?
All right, so let me, let me, I'm going to go on a presumption here. You tell me if I'm in the wrong direction or not. So it sounds like there are a good number of these folks, there's not an interest in pursuing, and that's fine, we understand that. But there may be, each of you may have selected a handful of folks that you are at least interested in learning more about. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
It's fair.
So what I would suggest, rather than us going through a formal triage of each of the candidates, let's just get the names of the top three, four, five, six, whatever the ones that you've got, each of you, and let's see where that list gets us and what that number is. You're likely to see some similarities, you may see a few stray cats, and we'll just kind of deal with that once we know what they are. That make sense?
Could, as far as your next step, do you do video interviews or have them describe themselves in the background?
Yes.
Maybe we could do that. Maybe the people that we narrow down to like the top five and receive video interviews from them, so we can get a feel of their personality and their backgrounds, is that something that we could do? Would you guys?
Mayor, if I can suggest, this is kind of, this, regardless of where we go, this would be our next steps. Whether you pick five or 10 or whatever, we do. So here's where we would normally go. We would normally have your next, your folks that you identified, we call them our semifinalists, they would prepare a response to a fairly detailed questionnaire, their background, their experience, why they left, size of budgets, operations. I'm going to sprinkle in a bunch of questions dealing with the challenges and issues we identified in the brochure, so I can get a chance to see how they would bring their background experience to the table to help address those items. We always ask about some items about why they left their previous position, any controversies you're involved with, you know, things that we're going to need to know about. I want to hear directly from the candidate first. At that point, then we also typically have our semifinalists respond to three to four different pre-recorded video interviews, where they're involved with, you know, what is it about this position that interests you? High-level positions, what is it on your resume that might be of interest to you? What's your, you know, what are your guiding philosophies? How do you manage folks? You know, whatever, whatever that looks like. They're pre-recorded, they're timed, so you get a chance to react to that. And then I, like you, have done some basic Googling of this work, but the next step we do is a LexisNexis called a Stage One Media Search, which is, we will, any of your semifinalists, we actually have folks that pull information out of the public domain, if you will, at a very high level, going forward to get a sense. So number one, we're hearing from the candidate about anything in their background, but we're also doing a little bit of analysis on a LexisNexis review. And then we package that material up, shoot it back to you, so you all have a chance to review that. The video interviews, you can review on an online, any online portal, the reviewing of the written material, you can do on your own. And then we'd be back talking about those candidates. In the meantime, what I think I'm hearing you say is you'd like us to reopen the position and continue to recruit position, or see if any other candidates come in, and we can talk a little bit about, you know, how we want to process those folks, if you want me to just get them started if they're really strong, based on the five or six that you're identifying with, so I know where you're at. So let me stop there. That's normally what I would suggest you do the next step. So there would be some material that would be coming back to you, but we have to give these candidates some time to kind of prepare their stuff.
Well, let's, let's.
I'm ready to provide names.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, yeah, let's go.
All right, and this is in no particular order.
Okay, are you taking notes, Doug?
I'm going to try to, let me, yeah, go ahead.
You miss Fuller, assist, please, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, all right.
Okay, I got Paul Trembino, Cesar Garcia, Daniel Covielo, Denise Fitzgerald, Jerome Wolverding, and Richard Ho. Those are six.
I'm sorry, can you give me that one more time?
I'm sorry. Paul Trembino, Cesar Garcia, Daniel Covielo, Denise Fitzgerald, Jerome Wolverding, Richard, I guess Ho, H-O-U-G-H. Covielo.
Glovering. Garcia.
Covielo.
I'm sorry, Covielo?
Covielo.
Okay. Gotcha. And Hoff, right?
And Hoff, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No worries. Councilman Stevens, you got, you got a list of like top five or six you want to take a look at?
I don't have five or six. I have David Straw, Michael Reese, and I, you mentioned there was three Palm Coast residents. I only see Jim Manfree here.
Right, the other ones I didn't think had, they were in your material, but I did not think that they had the prerequisite background you're looking for.
They were triaged out.
But they're, they're your call. I mean, at the end of the day, that's your call, not mine. I've just, I focused on the ones that I thought were closely aligned to what you were looking[1762.51] were looking at, so.
Okay, I'd like to add Manfree to that list, because he's local, familiar with the city.
Okay, Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add Mr. Gottschel.
I'm sorry, what was that name?
Gottschel.
What's the first name?
Oh, Gottschel, okay, gotcha, okay.
What's the name, first name again?
Bradley Gottschel.
Bradley.
Mr. Jones.
Sorry, they're in alphabetical order by the first name, what was the first name?
Redman, sorry.
Thank you, no, that's okay.
And Mr. Willison Drew. And we had some overlap there, so, that's my list.
Hi, Smear.
I agree with Councilman Gambero on Paul Trembino. I had Robert Hemminger, Darren Caldwell, and did you say Kara Boiles was still, Doug, or did she withdraw?
Kara?
Kara Boiles was definitely in.
And Kara Boiles.
I'm sorry, your second was, what was your, your second name?
I had Paul Trembino, Robert Hemminger, Kara Boiles, and Darren Caldwell.
Caldwell, that's all I want to get, okay. And then Kara Boiles.
We're looking for a pair, three of a kind, or a full house.
All right, Mayor, what are your thoughts?
Wow, because I think I'm a bit off on than most people, my top two is Richard Hugh, is that how you pronounce it, Hugh?
Hoff.
Hoff.
Okay.
Kara, I was impressed with her resume, and some of my others were, I guess, outliers. Scott, the guy that was a finalist for New Smyrna, we can take a look at him.
Okay.
And David and Michael, those two popped up on my list, so, so what's the total there, if you narrow it down?
David, which David, we had a couple of Davids.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Straw?
Straw.
Is that it? Who mentioned David Straw?
Who was that?
That was you?
Okay. And what was the other?
That was it, Richard, Kara, Scott, David, and Michael.
And Michael, was that Reese?
Okay.
Michael Reese, yes. That was an overlap with someone. So, what we got there on the total number that we narrowed it down to, because there's some, not all of them are overlapping.
I see, it's Michael Reese.
Yeah, there's about eight, there's about 18 names in total, but, so, let me suggest this, one of-
Narrow it down.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, let me do this, I've got a spreadsheet that had all the candidates' names on, let me just get to that, and then let's take these candidates, and then let's have you just rank them as a group, one, two, or three, and then let's see where that shakes out. So, you've kind of triaged down to this smaller pool first, and then let's see if we can get it down to a smaller group, yeah?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, for the public, this is, this is a, a big deal for the city, and we want to do it right, and we want, like, like I said in that one interview, I want us to get our, the best, the most bang for our buck, and I don't want someone that's short-term, and I certainly don't want anyone that's job-hopping.
Well, and that was my concern, Mayor, with David Straw, I actually have on his, on my notes for him, that there was quite a bit of job-hopping on his, and, so that was my one concern with him.
And I, and some of, some of those are interim-type positions, but I understand the nature of what you're raising.
I mean, he had a job, 2017 to 2018, a city administrator, then interim village manager from 2019 to 2021, and then deputy county manager from '22 to '23, and then interim human resources number, manager from '23 to the present.
They're going to take you a minute to maybe print that for us, and we can go through and do that?
Just, just bear with me one second?
Well, I'm just saying, we can take a break, if you need time, we can take, I would like, can I get consensus to take a break, are we close, we're close to two hours?
If he needs.
Can I get consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll adjourn for 10 minutes.
Okay, gotcha.